Did you do the oath of office for those three?
Oh.
Yeah, we did them.
You did them, Davis?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just Kevin, Elaine, and Todd, I guess. Um, so, and then, uh, we need to nominate a chairman after we do roll call and when we open the meeting. So Ke- Kevin, are you, can you hear me, Kevin?
Yeah.
Hills, you want to just open the, um, open the meeting?
Okay. Planning Commission meetings now open at 5:35. Roll call.
Mm-hmm.
Kevin Hills, hi Kevin Hills. Go on.
Lady George is present.
Todd Smith.
Ina Audrich.
Davis Evenson.
That it? Are we waiting for anybody else?
No, then Dean, Dean's here.
I'm here.
Donald.
Kevin Cameron's here.
Yep.
We don't do, uh, flag salute?
No, no, because there's no flag. Yeah. Um. Okay.
It's on our agenda.
Uh, we need to nominate a chairman, Kev, uh, so take nominations for that.
I nominate Kevin Cameron.
I decline the nomination, seriously.
I'll nominate Kevin Hills.
I decline the nomination.
Why are you doing that?
Has I been, I've done it for long enough. I nominate. How about, uh? Okay, Kevin, I've been there too. So how about let's, let's nominate, uh, Davis Evenson.
Okay. Is your name?
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a first and a second nomination for Davis Stevenson.
Uh, was that a second by Kevin Cameron? Yes, okay.
All those in favor, answer by saying aye, aye.
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 Any opposed?
Me.
Okay, there's your new chairman, I'm out of here. He can take over now, right?
Yeah, I guess we'll call this meeting to order, I guess. Here we are.
There you are.
Roll call's done, announcements.
I just didn't need to do those and then we'll get into the new business, um.
Okay.
Okay, so, get my, we'll start with Kevin Hills. Um, I, Kevin Hills.
Hi, Kevin Hills.
Swear that I will support the Constitution and laws.
Swear that I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
And then I will faithfully perform the duties.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
Of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
Okay. And then, um, Elaine. I, Elaine DeGeorge.
I, Elaine DeGeorge.
Swear that I will support the Constitutions and laws.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the city of Detroit.
And the city of Detroit.
And then I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
Of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
Mm-hmm. And then the last, we have, um, Dave, uh, not Davis, why do I keep saying that, Todd? Um, so I, Todd.
I.
Swear that I will support the Constitution and laws.
Swear that I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States. The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
And the city of Detroit.
And the city of Detroit.
And then I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
Of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
Correct. And so, um, if you have not signed the oath of office, um, I can either send them to you or you can come in and, and sign them here in Dayton. We're in Dayton. Okay, just let me know what you want to do, um, and later.
You can send me, if you could email it to me, I can send it back.
Not sure if it's gotta be original or not, but I'll, 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 I'll find that out.
Okay.
All right. So I'm done. Can move on. Um.
I guess that means I'm up, okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, um, bear with me here, I wasn't planning for this, um. Looks like we got through the roll call, got through oath, now we're on to announcements, declarations of conflict of interest and ex parte contact. Um, not too sure. What's this all about? Conflict of interest indicates a direct and indirect financial benefit as defined by Oregon Government Standards and Practices commissioned from an agenda item and excludes any involvement in discussion or vote on the issue. Everybody had a chance to look at this?
I don't believe we have anybody that has any conflict of interest.
So, so Davis, it would be if somebody, one of the commissioners had, um, a conflict of interest, they would have to say so. That's what that is for.
So does anybody have any conflict of interest?
No.
So. So, uh, Davis, I mean, this would be something where if one of us had an RV lot that would stand to gain by something that was gonna happen here, but the population is so big
Mm-hmm.
that there's really no conflict because it's, it's covering a big, uh, population. Besides that, I sold mine today, I closed on it.
Oh, wow.
So what do we? Where do we go from here to make a move, a motion to, I mean, there's no discussion?
We just move on to the new business, Davis, and McCray will, will probably start in on that.
Yep.
Review and, yeah.
Looks like McCray, you're up.
Okay, thanks. Um, sorry, I'm just trying to change my screen so I can have my reports up too. So, um, hopefully you all received the staff report, um, that can help you get up to speed with where we're at. Um, City Council in November directed COG staff to take a look at the code and, um, bring back, they had several items they talked about, um, that evening. Um, you know, some much more long-range planning types of things, um, creating an overlay district and having more design standards, there's been talk of, uh, you know, a Timber Town theme. Um, and looking at the minimum lot size requirement for Detroit. And then they talked about, um, some immediate responses that could help property owners, um, that were impacted by the fire and that dealt with allowing for temporary housing, particularly around the RV, um, use, allowing RVs as a temporary use. Um, allowing non-conforming structures to be rebuilt, um, allowing an accessory structure to be built prior to a, um, primary structure, uh, to be allowed. Um, but all of this being temporary provisions and so I brought back, so I came back to council in December, just to clarify, they had said all these things in November. And, um, myself and Renata, the COG said, well, those are kind of two different things, the, the RV, the accessory structures, the non-conforming structures, those are all what we want to have right now, potentially in the, an emergency ordinance or an ordinance we do, you know, quickly. Uh, for people to be coming back and rebuild and that other visioning work, the discussion about minimum lot size, potentially, um, design work, that, that's gonna be a longer range planning and we're gonna probably bring in some consultants to help with that too. Um, so that is something you all will be involved with in the coming months, I believe, but what's in front of us right now is from City Council meeting last month, last, no, three weeks ago, I'm sorry, my months are running together. Um, they, they, that was their first look at the, um, ordinance 266, the draft ordinance that I had for them with RVs and accessory structures being permitted and also bringing in language about non-conforming, uh, development being allowed to be rebuilt. The non-conforming developments, they didn't review. Um, you all are looking at the code section on the non-conforming development for the first time. Um, and they just, the, the council directed the, me to bring this to you all, to have you all take a look, um, to speak to a few of their concerns, um, which I specifically lined out, um, on the first page of my staff report. Limit, limit the number of people in an RV or temporary structure, um, in the ordinance I brought to them in la- last month, there was a limit, um, and we've since determined that we cannot restrict the number of people that are in an RV. Um, there's some fair housing, um, components that, so I just eliminated that, that you're, it, we're limiting the number of RVs you can have, but we're not limiting how many people can be in an RV. Um, allow the extension of the permit, we want to have it be two years with two one-year extensions, whereas what I brought before was just, th- these are things they said. What it had in it before was two years with one, one-year extension, and the council said they'd like to have two years with two one-year extensions. Um, the ordinance I brought forward and the permit, the transitional housing permit, um, didn't include a fee and the council said they wa- they would like to have a fee. And then, um, finally, this non-conforming structure language for if a structure is damaged or destroyed by the fires that you can rebuild, and they said they wanted to have a period of four years. And so if you scroll down the proposed amendments, this is the new language and I would just ask, specifically, I need you all to weigh in on the permit fees and give direction and we can talk about what we currently require for fees. But then we can also, then I just need, if there are other items that you all, um, have concerns or want to see modified or make recommendations for your feedback.
Hey, McCray?
Yeah.
Um, I just want to mention that Ross Day's on here and I'd like to introduce him as, uh, a land use person, so Ross, I don't know if you want to just give a quick background?
I, uh, I, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I, um, introduced myself, I'm a land use attorney here in Kaiser, Oregon, I'm also a city counselor. And, uh, I'm happy to help, um, with your, uh, with your, um, with your meeting, so I'll just, I'll mute and.
Nope, the more help the merrier. Appreciate you being here.
You, my pleasure.
Davis, this is Gina and, um, McCray, I don't know, I went through the whole proposal and I made a whole bunch of notes. So Davis, I don't know how you want to go through this, if you want us just to each list what our concerns were, our questions, or if you want to go through step by step, what would be the?
I'd like to just go with an open discussion, um, I don't know if everyone's literally read through all this or not, but, uh, um, as we go through it, there's a lot of things to, to digest here. So yes, I would like to just go around the room and see what, uh, open discussion and we can go from there.
You want me to start?
Yeah, I'd love to hear.
Okay, I just was, I was looking at the four points, McCray, that you outlined and I'm just gonna read from some of my notes that I made earlier. I'm glad you said something about the fair housing, because that would be a big deal if we were gonna limit the number of people in a household, so I guess that's a non-issue right now. Um, as for the two years with the two one-year extension, when I was reading through this, there was a lot that was referencing a one-year and then a 24-month and then a four-year, and then when I got to the very bottom, I thought this made sense on the ordinance, that it says the ordinance will remain in effect until September 8th, 2025. So that must be five years from the date of the fire, so we're already six months beyond that, um, or just about. So to me, it made sense of just doing, using that date as a benchmark and maybe just making it the five years. And then when I looked at the permit fee, um, I had questions on that, because I didn't know how much staff time would be involved in reviewing all of the, um, drawings that need to be done. But if it's gonna be substantial staff time, I do support that there would be a fee associated with that, partially because I think the city, we need to pay our staff for the resources that they're using. But also, um, I think we need to start making some money for our poor little city, because we're not paying water bills or anything like that. So I do support that there be some sort of fee. Um, but if we're gonna get, if we're gonna have a two-year and then another extension of another two-year or a one-year, my concern would be that city staff that is gonna be reviewing all of the building plans and everything else that's coming before the city that we're just gonna bog them down, which is part of why I would recommend the five-year with that sunset clause. Um, I have a few other concerns that are more in-depth in the proposal, but I can hold off on those for more discussion, but the one thing that really stood out to me was having setback requirements for the RVs. And just for an example, if somebody has a 5,000 square foot lot and they have to draw the, um, boundaries for the RVs and abide by the set rules, how are they gonna be having the RV there with setback rules along with trying to build and pour a foundation that meets the setbacks also? I can take a pause now.
Um, that's mainly, um, Gina, for, um, safety reasons, that's why that is in force.
Yeah, I, I get it, it makes sense if we were gonna allow it to be permanent, I'm just not sure how we're gonna be able to meet that if somebody was truly living in their RV on the same lot that they're gonna be building and they have to meet the setback requirements for both the temporary RV and building their new structure.
Anybody else have input on that?
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
That we take the, uh, ordinance, if we all have it, in front of us. And we, uh, maybe just go through it section by section. Uh, because many of the things Gina said, I, I had too as well, and we may be able to come and just check right through the list and, uh, have some agreement as we can move through it and in the areas that we can't, uh, agree on some recommendations and maybe we highlight that and then come back to it. That's okay with the.
I like that idea, so we'll start right in section one.
Yeah.
Everybody have any issues in section one? Didn't think so, section two, that's when we start going into the transitional housing. Portion of it, there's a lot in there, you got step one, two, three, four, we can start right from the beginning, any objections, working our way down?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I just didn't know what the, I didn't see a fee schedule someplace.
I didn't either, I was gonna ask that question as well.
What's the ordinances that you're looking at to?
I, so I did not include a fee schedule, we have our current, um, RV permitting, um, I wonder if I'm capable of sharing that. Um, but, yeah, that, so we charge $50, um, you know how those, are, is everyone familiar with our current RV permitting and the seasonal permit?
More than I'd like to be.
Oh, sorry. Um, hold on, I'm opening it up so I can look at the specifics of the fees, oh. Now, if y'all feel like sometimes you have so many different things open, it's hard to know.
Just, it, the, the fact is, is there's not a fee here.
No.
So.
No.
Maybe filing a fee in accordance to the city's fee schedule, which is another schedule, so that can be dealt with separately, that'd be accurate?
We could have that, um.
We, we don't need to recommend, we don't need to recommend a fee, the city council can do that on their own.
I think so, I mean, they can either adopt the fees of the, um, RV, the temporary RV permit right now, um, or they could adopt a land use, like this is a type one land use application fee, but yeah, there is a fee structure, there's a land use fee structure and a fee structure for the RV permit.
So Gina's point of making sure that fee is enough to cover the staff's time and expense.
Yeah. So I think. Okay. Um, thank you.
I don't think $50 is, but.
No, I don't think it is.
If it's a two, if it's a two-year fee, then if it's, if it ends up being a two-year fee, you could at least double that.
Well, I think, um, Kelly and I should spend a little bit of time on what, what her review is gonna look like for this, so I appreciate you all, um, thinking from this perspective and giving, uh, feedback, so.
Mr. Chair, that was my first comment, was on the fee.
So we're gonna leave it to McCray and and go over that and figure out what they're gonna do for a fee, for a two-year fee, and then look at this again, are we gonna try to come up with some idea here and give it to the, I would think the plant, um, city council is gonna want us to give them a recommendation with the fees.
Do we have a fee schedule for reviewing other plans and applications not associated with RVs, like building permits, et cetera?
Uh, yes, it's, um, a type one, type two, um, is a hundred dollars, type three, type four is, um, $200, and that, those are for administrative fees for variances and different things like that. Building permits, no, we don't have a fee. Well, actually, we, we have a zoning fee, but we don't have a administrative fee for that.
Kelly, what is the zoning fee for your building permit review?
20%, not very much.
Yeah, it might be best to take that type one, it, type one and type two administrative fee, because that's, the fact that we designated this as an, that the city recorder is the reviewing body, it really will behave like a type one permit, and so if she is taking in, um, a type one land use application, if the city takes in a hundred dollar administrative fee, it would seem concurrent and it potentially seems more reasonable to cover the cost than the $50 RV permit process, even though the work is the same, really, these permits are similar, Kelly has to look at similar stuff for the RV permit. So that said, the RV permit is another item the council does want, another look of planning commission to look at, but we're not doing that right now. So with that said, what do you all think about that of the hundred dollar fee?
Better than 50.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah.
My, my only, my only question is, I mean, the fee's reasonable, but I still go back to enforcement. How are we gonna make sure that people are actually doing this, and if they aren't, how are we going to enforce it to make sure they do?
Mm-hmm.
Well.
Go ahead, Kevin, I'm sorry.
I just think that's a question at the end. I think we need to get, uh, personally, Todd, I think that's a great question, but I think we need to get through this, uh,
Okay.
this recommendation that we've been given, and no matter what we recommend, I think your question is very valid, but that's, I would like to just put that off to the side so we can get through this.
I agree with that, let's, uh, let's come up with an agreement with a fee schedule or RV permit fee for that hundred dollars for the first two years, um, and then move, get into the nitty-gritty of these things.
So, and would we, for each year, you pay the renewal fee? If you come in after two years, right, and you want to get another extension, you pay the fee again?
That's what I would assume.
Okay.
Two year, every two years.
Yep. Well, no, the way the language is, you come in for, you come in, the first time you pay a hundred dollars for a two-year permit, and then if you still are, um, you're not at the point where you have built or you're still needing and wanting to live uh, on, in your RV, you come in for an annual extension. So do we want to charge an additional hundred dollars at each of those extensions, or just a one-time permit fee?
I think we gotta charge something for the.
Yeah.
For the city recorder.
Just for clarification, is the two-year, is that already decided, we're not discussing the time limit?
That is what, you all can discuss anything and make a recommendation back to the council, the council did say at the last meeting, I brought it with, uh, two years with one, one-year extension, and they said we want two years with at least two, one-year extension, so four years total.
Let's jump into that right away, um, my opinion is, I like just a two-years upfront and then a one, 12-month extension, that's my, my opinion, but other people have other opinions here as well. Like to hear everyone's status on that, let's decide on that and then we'll come back to the fees.
So, can I jump in there? I, uh, I would go with the two extensions only because I think, uh, I think with the amount of building that needs to happen, uh, I don't believe we got enough contractors, uh, to get it done. So, um, I think we're gonna be scrambling to get them done in four.
So Dean, two one-year extensions though, but not, what I hear you say is, I think it says here, it's a two-year permit with an option of two 12-month extensions.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I was, I was with Davis, I thought it was a little bit long, but I think you're right, it's gonna be really hard for people to get.
Yeah, I mean, I, I look at the three years, hasn't, because we have the, uh, the end date, is it 2025, is that what it said?
Yeah.
Okay, so a lot of people haven't even, they haven't even digested it yet, so that two-year hasn't even started, so if you started right now, um, I mean, you're not gonna go throw this RV in there day one. You got a lot of work, lot of, you know, there's a lot of work to do before you set that RV in there. So my feelings are, is you're, you're not gonna set that RV up there until you got pretty much know what you're gonna do, and two years and then plus one year excess, three years, that's, to me, that's, that's a long time, as a contractor, three years, we've built, uh, some pretty good-sized projects in three years. So I don't want to cut anybody off or, you know, shortchange anybody, but, um, I think three years is a long time.
Three years versus the extra-year extension, that's what, that's what we're, that's what we're talking about. Three years versus four.
Right.
And uh, well, I'd go either way.
Would it make sense to have the extensions aligned with the sunset date? Or is this just a case-by-case, is how we're looking at it?
Well, I think the interesting thing about, if I can offer about the sunset clause, like, right, that the ordinance will go away, but if in fact you have applied for your extension and you're living, you know, so say we're September 2025, but I got my permit for my, you know, second extension in July, I'm not, don't get dialed into the numbers, but I'm saying we're not gonna make someone, because the ordinance is no longer in place, we're gonna allow that permit to run. But I, I appreciate what you're saying about just having a consistent date of effectiveness for the ordinance and everything. But I, yeah, that, I mean, that's hard, I can definitely find the right language, like, it, I think that's the question, like, do you want, when the clause is over, like, the story's done, folks, there's no more living in your RV as a temporary structure, like.
That's a, that's a, that's a good point, uh, McCray, I, I think, Davis, what if we, what if we, um, because some of the things we've done in our building permits go from the date of the disaster, so from September 8th, which this, uh, this, uh, thing expires in five years from the disaster, what if we push this thing back and just say, um, the timeframe of the RV, which, there's people that have been, have RVs on their lots right now that we are under some nothing, what if we coincide that, that uh, no permit could be extended past that expiration of this date?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So you, you, you could do a two-year, we're almost, shoot, we're, what, how far are we into the first year already, right?
Yeah, we're six months.
So you could do a two-year, and then you could do one-year extensions, but not past the five years of the disaster.
Not to beat a dead horse here, but if we're okay, I'm just trying to find the concept and also balance it with Kelly's staff time. If we were okay with somebody moving an RV in, let's say tomorrow, and having four years, or, you know, a two-year, then a one-year, and then a one-year, would there be a way to say they could, I'm not really sure how to articulate this, but, so they could have a one-time, uh, pass between now and that sunset date, and then that way they're not having to continue to reapply with the city. And I don't care if you made the fee higher than a hundred dollars, but I'm just trying to figure out, how is Kelly gonna have time to go through all of these renewals? go through all of these renewals if they all come up at the same time as well as the building and planning permits?
I'd hope that we could come up, that um, COG can help Kelly if she doesn't already have some sort of system, you know, Marion County has its permit process. If there isn't some way that it'll just have a tickler that when the permit is coming on, it's completion of two years, you get your first permit, that, you know, we could send a renew, you know, two weeks before, a very blanketed, simple letter like, your permit's coming up, please let us know whether you intend to renew or per your signing of the, the permit, you have to, you have to leave, right? Because there's that provision in the permit requirement that you acknowledge that thirty days, you're done, like this, this ends. So that might be a way that, I think we could actually, in light of all the technology we have, have a system that won't put a lot of, I think the upfront work is going to be a lot for Kelly, the initial review of permits. And compliance is separate.
When they renew, they will not have to do a whole new application in the, the drawings, or it'll just be, yep, I want to renew for another twelve months.
I think that's for you all to discuss, but I think, I think that that is a way to get to the idea of too much workload that essentially of not um, overburdening Kelly and the city recorder with too much workload on redundancy of stuff that's not adding value. Like, are you renewing your permit? We, we could add a line of extensions on that permit that essentially, are you renewing this? Did you pay your fee? Uh, has your, has your location changed at all? Have you modified, right? And then if yes, yes, or no, no, yes, no, then we're done. And it, it just goes on file. I don't know.
I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to get to Davis's point because we do want to encourage people to rebuild and not sit there. So what if, what if we recommend the sunset is four years from the date of the fire instead of five? Right? We can always review it. The council can always extend it. They can always, they can always bring it up again. Four years from now or uh, three and a half years from now when we're sitting here talking about it. So if we went to um, a four-year sunset on the ordinance, two-year permit with two one-year extensions possible, but they sunset, those extensions sunset in four years from the disaster. So basically you're three and a half years out now. It's almost a compromise between what, what Davis was saying versus what Dean was saying. That gets it done.
Yeah, uh, I like, you know, the, the sunset clause to me, it's, I'm not, to me, if I'm going to apply for this, let's say I apply for it when I get water. Didn't mean to bring up a sore subject there.
Right.
Right. A lot of people aren't going to want to, you know, put the, go up there, put their RV in there and start building right at the moment. Um, so really, people aren't going to start applying for these, I don't think anyway, until later on, until they know there's water coming. And so the sunset clause being, we have it at twenty twenty-five right now, correct?
Right.
If I don't apply for this for another year, then I have a two-year permit to live there, build, and I can extend it one year. I'm pushing on that twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five timeframe. I think we're fine with the sunset at twenty twenty-five. Are we saying that sunset clause, when it, September eighth, twenty twenty-five, you got to pull your trailers out?
No.
Okay. We're just basically saying you can't apply for the permit after that date, right?
McCray said that. So if, if I applied for a permit uh, July of twenty twenty-five and got the extension, whatever that is, one year, my extension is good even though it sunsets.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, like I thought. So, I mean, two years and a plus a one-year extension, I think is pretty, we can always review that as well, you know? I mean, it's one of those things, is it not enough? Is water not in there? Nobody's building. Um, I, three years is a long time to build a, build a home.
Yeah. Dean? Did he fall asleep?
No, no, no. I, my internet is very unstable, so I got to fall in and out.
Yeah, I'm in for the three years.
Okay.
I know my husband, which was a crazy New Yorker, got up there in February and built that hotel through the winter months and was done in five months.
You know how crazy you are.
He, he's an extraordinary guy. But you know, I, I would like to see three years and then have that twelve on the back end, that twelve months, to move them along, you know? You get them in there and it gets a little too comfortable. Yeah, now, I mean, we do have bad weather up there to build in, but it still gives them a lot of good weather through that six months to get the houses built. And I, I don't see that they're going to build any big houses up there. I mean, Dean's got a pretty big home, but when you're paying a contractor, you want to get built and get out of there. I mean, it, it drives up your costs.
Well, Ross needs to weigh in on the number. Todd?
I'm, I see the advantage of the three and the four. Um, I, I just think that it, the clock should start ticking when we start getting water and electricity up there. Um, that's my only concern is we've already lost six months of, of a sunset date. And I don't think people should be penalized because we don't have, we don't have water yet.
You can't build without water.
Anybody else? Well, um, as it sits right now, it's sitting on a twenty-four month initial permit with a one twelve month. Do I hear anything, any changes, any motions for changing it?
I'm with you.
Okay.
Two, two-year with uh, one-year extension from the time you apply.
From the time you apply.
Yep. After the water's in.
Do we have a date on that?
No.
Can we even put that in there? I mean,
No.
Can't we just extend?
We, yeah. We could. We could recommend that, that there's no fee until there's water. But then you're going to have people sitting up there with traders all over the place with no kind of control. I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend that. Yeah, we do.
We have a lot of those now. There's traders coming in every day.
But I think it's important that we get this fit, I mean, figured out and get this submitted to the, to the council and get it approved and get it into you sooner rather than later.
I don't think you, I don't think, Davis, I would not recommend we put a water requirement around it because of, it would, if you want to go up there now and survive, as long as you meet all the requirements that are in here.
Yeah, we're building right now. We got our water buffalo up there. So we're, we're moving along. Um, I'm going to move on the twenty-four month with the one twelve month and we can look at it later on. If it takes longer to get water, we just extend that sunset uh, clause. Is everybody okay with that?
Do we need a nomination?
Uh, we're not changing anything. I, I don't think we do.
All right.
And that's item number six. Now we're moving on to the additional items and item two. Anybody, we discussed the setbacks. Do you want to talk about that a little bit more?
I had two point two. The city recorder shall be the decision authority. Is there any appeal process?
If we want to include in here that this is a type one land use action, which um, you know, would align it with the fee schedule we're talking about, then there would be an appeal process.
I think that would be appropriate. I would also like to see a timeline for the city to either approve or deny, so that folks know, is, do I have a two-week waiting period? Do I have a thirty-day or is it a two-day? That just kind of submit to that of within seven, fourteen days, you'll have approval or a denial.
Mm-hmm.
Does the county have something like that right now when you're applying for a building permit? It always seemed like to be on a sliding scale. Whenever I applied for a permit, you never really knew you had a date.
Yeah, yeah. You have to call the county commissioner and he hurries it up.
I'm gonna,
Because I hate to say that and have fifty of these things, you know, if she gets bogged down, you know, then she's, I don't know, I just don't want to put a timeframe on there if she has to. I mean, these are, what's the process of signing these off?
It wouldn't take uh, that long. You, you, there's got to be a site plan. And whatever um, is decided in regards to the setbacks, then it's, um, it's about as quick or quicker than looking at a building permit. Uh, for us, it's uh, you just make sure the setbacks are correct, uh, which includes, you know, from the septic as well and the drain field. Um, that's pretty much all it would be. And there's a, there's a form to fill out. Um, and you know, I do have, we do have a city clerk that, that can help um, along the way as well. It's not just me. So I don't think it would take very long at all.
An hour, Kelly? I mean, just realistically, less than?
Yeah.
Yeah. But it, but, but that's assuming that Kelly gets an application that is, it contains everything that it needs to, but I see several nods. Like, we know that Kelly is probably going to receive, receive some applications that are going to need some uh, more support. Like, I don't know how to get that information. Um, so I, I think probably at a minimum an hour in, in general, and to say an hour or two hours for this type of review, for Kelly to be able to do intake and the city clerk.
But if she receives, we have work on a Friday, we don't want her to be pressured that she has to turn it back around before, you know, five o'clock on Friday. But would it be realistic to say seven or fourteen days? And if she gets it done in two days, great, but at least we have a timeline.
Can I weigh in? I, I believe the people have to know that a permit is going to be required. Uh, people are just bringing their trailers up and parking them. So the landowners need to be aware that a permit's going to be required along with the plot plan. And, you know, maybe a brief description of where you need to park your RV. Uh, two of them came in last weekend and people just pulled them in, started looking stuff up. So I don't know if they're even aware that a permit's going to be required.
Well, no, they don't. Not yet.
Yeah, and so they'll, there will need to be through social media and maybe a mail or something that we send to all residents, you know, several different ways if this ordinance gets adopted uh, with this provision, that we'll need to just do some outreach, some public outreach to make sure.
It goes back, it goes back to Todd's issue. We need to deal with all that off to the side after we get through this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. So I hear, I had shared with you all that we could tie this to a type one land use application, but that requires like some amendments that we're not doing right now. What I could put in here would be um, this decision is made, you know, this uh, decision is made by the city recorder, an appeal, uh, an appeal of the decision can go to city council? Where, where do you all think an appeal should go?
Right.
Perfect.
Yep.
Similar to, the, the dilemma with that, and I've thought this with the RV permit, is that, you know, city council meets once a month, right? I think we're going to see more frequent meetings, but that's just, if you can't be in compliance with these pretty standard permit requirements and you disagree, or if you think you should be allowed another extension and you've been denied, then you need to go to city council. You have, you have a mechanism to appeal. So I will add that language. Okay.
Like that.
So has everybody looked at the transitional housing, the actual recreational vehicle permit? Did you guys read that? Um, it's came with, okay, so it's, it does, it's pretty, it's pretty basic. So um, hopefully we won't have uh, too much of a problem. We'll see.
It looks pretty simple to me. Let's move on to the setbacks. I heard some concerns on the setbacks due to the small lots.
Yeah.
What section is that?
Calvin.
Section two point seven.
Says RV must be parked at least five feet from the front side and rear property lines and ten feet from a structure when unit is fully extended.
So that makes sense to me if this was, you know, just a conditional permit for somebody to have an RV there for a certain number of, you know, months or a year or two, but not if you're building at the same time, because your lot may not be large enough to have the RV meeting those setbacks as well as your new structure.
You know, a lot of those lots, you can't put an RV on and build, you know, they're going to have to move that RV. You know, you can't get, you know, construction stuff in there, dump trucks. I mean, those lots are tiny.
And they can't park on the street.
Well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay keeping it for safety reasons and all that, and they can always make arrangements with their neighbor to move their RV.
Move it, yep. Like view RV, there's going to be some places where they can move it if they are actually going to be pouring foundation.
I have the, the ten feet from the structure.
Foundation.
I have the, the ten feet from the structure. That's going to be tough to do. That's going to be tough.
So make it five feet from the structure too.
Well, let's think about the, the structure, you know, the structure that might be being built, might be an accessory structure. So it, it could be fully appropriate for you all just to remove that, uh, that position.
That's what I'm thinking. That's what I was thinking.
I agree.
Okay. So. So just um, five feet setbacks from property line.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
When unit is fully extended.
I think more than half of them are going to have to move their homes before they can build their permanent home anyway. So it's going to be a whole different deal.
All right.
So as it sits right now, it's RV must be parked at least five feet from the front side and rear property lines when unit is fully extended.
Yes.
It's going to make it tough for people, I understand, and it, it kind of it holds them accountable to try to make, work things out with their neighbor and everything else. So I like it the way it's written now. Anybody else have any more thoughts on that?
Um, I just have, uh, just from past um, complaints from the fire department, especially um, when there's uh, not enough room to get in to, for a fire or any type of emergency. Um, that's been brought up by the fire chief as well. But um, uh, that would be the only thing I could think of that would maybe be an issue. I don't know. He might be just fine with it too.
It gives him ten feet to get through. If they reach five feet from each property though, that's as much as a house would be.
Okay.
All right.
Only temporary.
Okay, we'll keep moving forward.
Well, hey, Davis, I realized, uh, back up on number three.
Number three, one recreational vehicle may be used for emergency housing on each legal billable lot, except that.
But up on section one says two, page two on A, says two vehicles, uh, two RVs. So.
It'll be one, one RV.
Okay.
Yeah, that was just an error. Sorry for that.
So our, so our normal RV uh, codes go away, so you can't have two RVs?
No, you could, no, the, if, if you could meet the permit for temporary, but you're only allowed for the temporary provision to only have it for a certain amount of time, or this provision, right?
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Davis, sorry, can we go back to number four also? I just had a question of the plumbing and/or electrical permits and how that's associated with this recreational vehicle.
Okay, so no recreational vehicle may be occupied until after an application has been approved by the city recorder and required building, plumbing and/or electrical permits have been issued by the county and approved after final inspection? That's the one you're referring to?
Yeah. Does that read correctly?
The county is requiring a permit before they hook up temporary power.
Right.
And there is no water.
But do they have to have the temporary power or can they have a generator? And I don't know, is there, there might be a, an ordinance against generators?
There is several running on generators now.
Right.
That are only there on the weekends. So before they put their permanent power in, they've got a temporary and they have to have a permit from the county for that.
That all makes sense to me. I'm just saying, are we not going to allow any recreational vehicles on this ordinance if they don't have an electrical or plumbing permit pulled or both of those?
That's just what the, what the norm, the regular development code is, it's required. And, and the reason being, again, especially once we do get water, they have to have a meter because of safety issues, fire issues. That, that most of this stuff has to do with safety issues.
I think we want them to have regular electrical hookups. Otherwise you're going to have neighbors, neighbors, you know, he's running his generator. I think it, it needs to be, if you don't have electrical, because if you had a lot that burned down, you can get electricity back. The, the plumbing or the septic issue may be another deal as long as.
Most of them hooking into their existing septics where their house was.
But if I don't, if my, if my septic has failed, as long as I'm pumping my RV with the, the provider, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that comes on.
It says that in here, just can't dump black water or gray water.
So maybe if they hook up to their existing septic, they may need a permit for that.
Yeah, they have to, yes.
Yep.
I don't know that they're all aware of that, so that maybe needs to make, make them aware that they do need a permit if we hook into their existing.
Authorization. Okay.
Andrew's permit is that?
I would offer the, maybe the language should remove building permit, but include a septic authorization or a plumbing permit. Those both come from Marion County.
If they use water, they obviously have to get rid of it, and if they don't have it pumped, then they're hooking into their septic, then they should be required to go through DEQ.
Have to go through the county. I don't think you have to do.
Yeah, the county.
No need.
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll deal with the people that are doing it now without electrical or with generators on a side note, is that what I'm hearing?
How do we enforce all this when we get done? That's the question. I had number eight, if we're there. No extension cords. I know there are RV quality extension cords.
Okay, so do we want to allow that?
Yes.
I think you just break it out.
Okay, yeah, I sort of struggled with that language. I was like, ah, it seems like there might be a time when an extension cord is appro, could be appropriate, but if you all support it not being there, I think it's fine and I'm not too concerned from a life safety.
I would agree.
Okay, so I'll remove that language.
Okay, we'll move on. Connections up.
So in number eight, where it has the authorized RV dump station, can we add or approve septic? As long as they have a septic permit from the county?
Yes.
I believe so.
I think that's very appropriate since we don't have dump stations in town.
Yep.
And to get a trailer pump nowadays is eighty-five dollars.
Minimum.
Minimum. From thirty-five a year ago.
Dean, I thought we, Dean, I thought you had a dump station up at the grocery store.
No.
Negative. That's our store.
He's got enough problems.
So can you all clarify again what, what to change with nine, add language about, I'm sorry, could you just repeat that?
The answer is on number eight, McCray. And RV may be self-contained, however, and gray water holding tanks shall be emptied at only an authorized RV dump station. We just need to add language, if they have an approved septic permit from the county, they should dump on their own property.
Okay.
Yeah, number nine, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Eight, sorry.
Well, you might be, there's the permit and then there's the ordinance, so. So, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
On a side note, most people are getting their septics inspected so they can start to apply for their building permits. And if maybe during that inspection, they can say, yes, you're okay to hook up your RV until your building permit comes. That maybe there's a, something that can be put in there.
I think that, I think if they obtain their septic, we just need verification that they have received authorization on the septic. Yeah, I think it can be pretty straightforward and we can work with the building official over at the county to, to find a way that's fluid and easy for everyone involved.
Just appropriate language is what we really need.
Yeah.
Well, number ten talks about that right there.
Yeah, there it is, yeah.
So now we're on page three, working our way to section three. Anybody have any objections with ten or eleven?
So on number eleven, when it says they have to remove their recreational vehicle from the lot within thirty days, that's pertaining to what, I guess where I'm trying to go with this, unless they hadn't otherwise applied for another city use permit, the, the non-permanent RV? Correct?
I think that's correct, Gina.
Do we need to say that or is that understood?
Are you meaning separate to, I need you to clarify.
Sorry, like the recre, I don't know the right terms, but currently they can have an RV lot for monthly.
I would say, I think we're okay because it's a different permit. Like if someone is going to be bringing an additional RV and they're permitted to do that through the RV permitting section, that, that is a different permit that Kelly administers.
Okay.
So. I understand. Yeah, I think, I, I don't think there's confusion. Kelly, do you foresee confusion in?
Uh, no, because it's, because it's separate, like you said.
Yeah, yeah, the goal is, is that these will really separate silos and dysfunction completely different. It, it, we will, there's no question, there will be a lot of, there will be confusion and questions that go along with this, but hopefully we can. If you want to live on your RV while you're rebuilding your house, this is the process. All year for longer than a few months. If you want to be up on your property for a few months, then the RV permit might be the appropriate vehicle.
Are we, have maybe a member of the city drive through once a week to check on progress and violations? Nobody that I've seen has been up there much. We've got a city worker that goes through, but he doesn't really know the rules and regulations.
Mr. Chair, that's, that's the issue Todd brought up. How are we going to enforce this?
Yeah, I think we get through all this and we'll discuss the fees one more time and talk about enforcement on all this.
Okay.
Moving on down to section three. I notice in there it says a primary structure will need to be built by the completion of termination of ordinance two six six. Is that true? I mean, we're extending this, it could, sunset clause, I mean, if I you're saying the sunset clause, this ordinance expires on September eighth, twenty twenty-five, but if I apply in June for a one-year extension, it's not my primary structure will not be built by that completion of the termination date. That's in this clause.
So how do we capture or tie in, tie in that you don't get into a non-conforming issue on your lot? That we allowed you to have an accessory structure that now is not permitted, you know, that we don't create a non-conforming. What, what's the trigger then?
I don't have the answer myself.
Yeah, no, it's okay. We're talking through it.
We're going to have to work this out as we go.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't encourage building. We don't want to encourage a trailer court. So we need to tell people that across to them that we don't want an RV park. We, you know, this is only till you build your house, then we'll talk about what you're going to do with your accessory structures.
But section three is not talking specifically about RVs. It's just the accessory dwellings, like a shed or a shop or.
Yeah, and it's not an accessory dwelling. This is an, this is, it's not an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. It, it is for an accessory structure, which, you know, which is secondary to the primary. So in your primary is the house. So we're saying right now, you can build a shed, you can build a garage, but it's not living quarters.
No.
By what the code says currently on an accessory structure.
While the camper goes, the accessory structure goes.
Yeah.
So. So, Mr. Chair, this is a little sore point. I probably should declare a conflict of interest because I was not allowed to build a garage to store my stuff on a piece of property that I own. I think we ought to put something in here that if you build an accessory structure and do not complete a primary structure by a certain time, it will be removed.
I agree. I like that.
Because otherwise we'll end up with what I wanted to do and I couldn't do ten years ago.
Because your lot size is too small.
No, it's not. It was ten thousand feet. Be quiet.
Can you buy, build one now?
It's, it's what the developed code, the current development code says, you can't have a next accessory structure without a primary structure. That, that's why.
Got it.
And I don't know why, but that's.
No, right, I agree. I agree with the, I agree with the code. But we need to make sure that you can't build a, it can't be a permanent structure. We can't allow people to build garages.
When the camper goes, their accessory structure.
It's got to be, it's got to be temporary, temporary structures.
Right, it's got to go.
What about a garage, what about a garage with living quarters?
Then they.
Living quarters.
Permit.
That, that qualifies as a living quarters.
Yeah, that can't happen.
It's got to be permitted.
If that came in as a building permit, in, for Kelly to review, she, and it had living quarters upstairs, you know, garage storage in the main floor, second story, she wouldn't be able to sign off in compliance with the code.
But Dean, that's what you're going to do. You're going to start out with that, then build your house, which is smart. You know, but that has to be permitted. You know, it's going to have plumbing, it's going to have everything.
Correct.
We're talking about a little, little shed.
Yeah, so to clarify, I heard, I heard you all say that it ha, it's temporary and it has to be removed.
Yeah.
So, so you want if someone gets a building permit and builds a, you know, a, I don't know, a three hundred square foot garage or something, I don't, I'm just throw, you want them to have to remove it at the completion? That, that's what you all think would.
I thought we were talking about a tool shed, something all to hold their goals.
I think it's important to, to talk through, because in theory, if, if somebody wanted to, they could build something larger.
Yeah, I think it's confusing people and having the accessory structure in with the RVs. I think it's appropriate because it's all the same ordinance or permit, but I think we're getting stuck on something that you would put RV in rather than this could be somebody's garage that they're building.
Yeah.
Four items until they build their structure. So I think it's too different.
They are two separate things. Is it, that's why it's a separate section? I know it is confusing.
Oh, wait, wait. No, I understand this as saying auxiliary dwelling or auxiliary building. This is building, I, I got my RV permit and I want to build this twenty by thirty auxiliary garage and this says I can do it.
Yeah.
Right.
And when this thing is over, there's nothing that forces me to have built a house.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Because today, today I can't do that and what's going to happen, this will expire, and we're going to have these people with garages and RV permits for the summertime.
Yeah.
And our existing code today does not allow that.
Correct, but the, this is, the primary structure will need to be built by the completion of that sunset date, right?
Okay, all right, so this goes back to Todd's question. This is an enforcement question, but I think you could put it in here that it has to be removed if the other, if the, if the permanent structure is not under construction by the end of this time or something.
I like the under construction. That makes sense.
Built, so under construction.
What I see a lot too, are, what do they do with their building tools? Their skill saws, their sawhorses, they don't want to put them in their camp trailer. So they want a, a tough shed, for instance, maybe something like that.
That's fine, Kevin.
Put a few, you know, something like that, I think is what they're looking for.
But if it meets, meets the city's requirements and their house is built and they, and they get a permit for that shed that's already been put there, then, and, and it's legal, they could keep it. Correct?
I agree. I think that should be.
You know.
So here's, here's a scenario that I was thinking about that where this might be, could become a problem. If someone is building an accessory structure like a garage and for some reason, they don't have enough money to build their primary structure or something happens, then what, then what do you do? Then that's going to be an issue. And it might not just be, well, you know, I, I'm thinking it might be somebody that doesn't have enough money to, to, to build or, or short.
And maybe they didn't have a house that was burnt down, they just owned the property.
Maybe.
Well, then does, does that bring us back to requiring a building permit before you issued this RV permit?
Yeah. Well, that's, you know, the council did bring that up. I, they, they did mention that, actually.
Well, that was, you know, that's an item we might want to circle back around and make sure it's in there.
The idea that you would have as part of your renewal, to be able to obtain an extension, you need to demonstrate you're working towards rebuilding on your property?
I think so.
You got to give them some time to get a building permit.
You could change the, the language under section three. Was it section three, one, what is that, properties subject to damage?
Right.
All other development standards apply, a primary structure will need to be under construction by the termination of this ordinance or auxiliary structure will need to be removed.
Great, thanks.
I mean, as simple as that.
I agree.
Otherwise we're going to have people, we're going to have people building garages and then they're never going to build their house and they're going to have two RVs in the summertime with the storage unit up there.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Because I wanted to do it.
And a bathroom in the storage unit.
Exactly.
Composting toilet.
So just to clarify, are you all recommending that you want it, that they've obtained a permit for their primary structure or that it's built by the end of the clause? The, is, is the language as it's written appropriate or do you want, are you recommending something different?
If we, they show, have to show progress, maybe towards their building primary structure by the end of the first year. Would that work? I mean, if they're just living there and playing on the lake and not showing any progress towards building their primary structure after a year, then maybe it's time to talk.
You're talking about the RV permit when you're saying that, the temporary housing.
And or the accessory structures. Like, like Elaine said, they can't put a bathroom in their accessory structure and then we're good.
Oh, yeah, no. You have to get a plumbing permit to be able to put a bathroom in, right? You'd have to obtain a plumbing permit. Yeah, yeah, you're gonna, if you're bringing a water line in, if you're tapping into your water line, you should, yeah.
This is accessory, if, if somebody pulls a permit with a kitchen and a bathroom and a bedroom and they have a big garage. If, if somebody pulls a permit with a kitchen and a bathroom and a bedroom and they have a big garage, that's a permanent structure. That's not an accessory unit.
Yeah, that's an ADU maybe, but, and we won't issue it. Kelly won't sign off on that.
Well, I like what Kevin said is having it, having construction. I don't know exactly how you said it, Kevin, but having it your construction by, before the termination of the ordinance to.
Progress towards, yeah.
Yeah.
That's five years from now.
Yeah.
Four and a half years from now.
Or your structure, uh, but I should include language that says, or your structure will have to be removed.
Yes.
Right. In addition to, uh, the language here that says it needs to be completed, there needs to be what's gonna happen if you don't.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. McCray, you want to summarize what you just made changes to so everyone understands what we just did?
Just under, um, 3.1, the primary code structure. So what I am going to propose is the language stays essentially the same, except the primary structure will need to be built. Um, or I might mess with that language. Uh, just to give a little bit more flexibility that you don't have to necessarily have a C of O, but that you will have needed to obtain permits and be, you know, on track, um, construction commence or something, um, by the completion of the termination of the ordinance. Um, or the structure will need to be removed.
Yeah, perfect.
Um, while we're on structures, let me ask, and I know McCray, you hate this, but um, would they be allowed to put the Ramadas in on top of their campers? Because we do have a family that has a camper in there already and they have a big Ramada over it.
What is a Ramada? Just a type of struck, it's a.
It's the metal building that covers it. Remember we had that problem and the city didn't allow those. But now we're looking at big dollar campers that are up there for the timeframe.
I think if you were, I think if you demonstrate evidence to us that your property was impacted by the fire and you're art and you're obtaining a transitional housing permit to be able to be there, you are also eligible to be able to build this accessory structure.
Okay. Are you calling that an accessory structure over your camper? Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, we're talking 75, $100,000 campers coming in.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be there through these cold times, the snow, the trees falling.
Yeah. No, I mean, in the, I.
But that would be an individual coming to you or Kelly.
For a building permit.
Okay, got it.
Yep, we would, the same way, just be reviewing and look, we're gonna look that they have, you know, how their foundation, where is it located, what are they pouring, you know? Yep. But I, I, just in the scenario you outlined, I believe it would be covered here.
But once again, when the house is built, camper leaves, the Ramada leaves.
Or you, you know what? In theory, I mean, you built your house. You can still have your RV, but it has to meet the provisions of the code for where that's allowed to be parked.
Got it.
So, yeah.
With our code, no Ramadas. Okay, just for instance.
But I, I think what, there's something that came up in my head and I want to say this to everyone, like, uh, I do see people potentially, I, where I see an opportunity of someone saying, well, I'm gonna do that temporary housing, this transitional housing and bring my RV and live out there all year. And you have to show, you will have to show evidence that your property was impacted. Like this isn't just the way this ordinance is intended. This is not out to allow for an expansion of what the RV permit you can do in your RV permit. So, and, and I hope that is clear in this language. And if it's, if it's not.
Just to use an example, Counselor Page can't just park an RV on his driveway all year long.
No.
And apply for a permit because his house is still sitting there. Wasn't impacted.
So I, I do have a question. I do have a question. When you say homeowners that had, that were affected by the fires. We have lots selling up there right now. How's that gonna affect them? Would they not be able to do it? Property?
No, no, properties, not homeowners. Thank you for clarifying. Properties that were impacted. We're gonna wanna know, was this property impacted? If you're, if you're coming in and it's a vacant lot, uh, that, I mean, that's a good, that is a good question. I don't, I don't know that I've thought to that degree. So what, what does the planning commission think? What do you, how do you all feel about that? If someone, uh, if this was a vacant lot, can someone, is someone eligible for this permit provision?
If they're planning to build.
Yeah, we hear, we hear one and one.
I think if they're planning, they should be eligible for it, but not all of the lots, or maybe we define which ones had structures on them prior and which ones did not. But some of the lots that are vacant aren't gonna be buildable anyway because they don't have septic.
Yeah.
What does our current coach say about that for construction, building on a lot?
Um, like.
Are you allowed?
What size, the, the size matters. The size of the lot matters.
They have to meet all the setbacks, septic criteria, everything. Just because their lot burnt doesn't mean it's effective. If it never had a house on it, they won't be any better off. They'll be in the same boat as it never did have burned.
Yeah. Yeah. So that would be, I guess, the case that, uh, would be like if someone came in and the lot had been vacant. If you don't have a septic, you're not gonna be able to meet the criteria of the transitional housing. Like you, you, so I, I think we've captured where we might have someone who'd be like, oh, I could use this provision to go and live in Detroit for a little while.
Well, the new property owners are gonna have to be aware too, that they may have to build in the same footprint as the existing house was. They'll learn that.
There it goes back to our old RV, um, plan. You know, if they want to come up, they have to only be there. The camper's gotta be out by October, you know? Of, of our old plan. They can't come in with this.
Yeah.
Move in.
So we're all in agreement that it's properties, you can't just, you can't go to this provision?
No, you have to show that you're building.
Say that, clarify that again.
You have to show that you are planning on building a home on that property to take advantage of this ordinance.
The language doesn't require that right now.
Well, it's kind of like they've, they've gotta have some kind of, um, they just can't come on up. You mean, they can?
Well, so, um.
Isn't this for kind of, um, yeah.
I guess I'd look at it as.
Transitional emergency.
Yeah.
It is intended for that. But I'm just saying there isn't a requirement, um, through the, through the proposed um, code that would require that you show us your, you know, um, proposed building site and have your plans, right? And that's what I heard you saying. I was, uh, is we would be required. In order to come back, we want to know what your plan is and, um, our, our permit language doesn't require that.
Okay, got it.
I'm, I'm glad this topic came up. So what if I just had a vacant lot, which I had, a couple lots? Uh, did not have a home on it. Hadn't pulled building permits. Does this apply to somebody who has those lots? They can live there all year round?
No.
For three years? So, so if, if you did not have a structure that was, that you lived, that was livable before and now is not livable, that's what I think we're talking about here.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Because people that just had RV lots before, they could use them for the season under certain circumstances. And now we're saying, no, you can live there year round?
No. So Kevin, there, right now there was a like some properties being sold and they basically just want to put an RV on it. Um, so they have to go by the regular, uh, development code for RVs because he had no, he had no, um, intentions on a building.
You had to have a loss, a use of structure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's called transitional housing.
But, you know, I think so, I, uh, this conversation is really important and it's important because I don't know that the language, I mean, even though Kelly said, even with what Kelly said, I don't know that we can look at the first section, section one, um, RV use as a temporary residence and, um, that there's really strong language that.
Right.
Only if you're a lot.
I was just reviewing that because like in some, some of the language we've used at the county on like forgetting permits and that kind of stuff, we just said, or taxes if you were impacted by the fire, meaning even if you didn't live there for a while, but your house is still standing. So this is about people who actually lost their structures.
Yeah.
We need to clarify that.
Yeah.
So when you go back to section one and add some language?
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Well, if you look at one A, um, I have two As. You need a second.
Oh.
I think that's getting close to where we want to amend it.
Mm hmm.
On a legal buildable lot when a transitional housing permit is obtained.
Mm hmm. Um, so just a statement that would include on lots that, um, structures were damaged, only on lots where structures were damaged by the fire.
Yes.
Right?
I agree.
That this code pertains only to lots that were impacted, that had structures damaged by the fire.
That wording needs to be in there.
Okay.
It needs to be right away too.
Yeah. Yep.
Great.
Yep. I'm so glad that we talked through this.
It needs to be, it needs to be livable in the stru, structures because there's some properties that were damaged that just had a auxiliary dwelling unit.
Yeah, I think the proof of loss, they have to, there should be a form of proof of loss to, uh, turn in. And it may better be a, a single family dwelling or something along those lines where people actually uh, a deal. I know Ross Day is saying entrance companies, they need to have a proof of loss. If we could get that.
Mm hmm.
You could put that on your, uh, permit.
Yeah.
Or your, or your taxes too. Last time.
Okay. Yeah, there, there are several ways that you could demonstrate this, but we're gonna need um, some sort of verification that there was loss on this property and that you're not just coming in.
So in the second A, we're gonna put some language in that one?
Yeah. Or I might put it in both. I might put it in both of those.
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to have it be very clear. It'll make, um, Kelly and Michelle's job a lot easier when they're having to, um, talk with people who are coming in saying, well, I don't see why I can't use this permit and.
Well, if they see a gray area, they'll try.
Okay. Thank you, Ross.
Sorry, McCray. If you back up, if you back up on the ordinance just before section one, on the last whereas, and it talks about single family residential, multifamily, does that capture?
Does that capture what?
Does that capture that there had to have been a structure or a livable structure on the property?
That, so the whereas, that section is just to say what zones, that this is, um, essentially if, if you're permitted to have a single family structure, then you could potentially have it. But I, I think I understand. I'll think about it and maybe have another planner take a look and see if they have concerns. Thank you. Well, thanks. I'm glad that we talked about this. Um, we really appreciate it.
So are we? Do we want to look at the application and do some amendments to the application or do we want to discuss the fees and the enforcement?
Actually, I need y'all to review section four, which is destruction of non-conforming structure by the fire.
Nope, there we go. Any input? Anybody?
Well, I think, I think we already talked about this. I had, uh, what was this on the, um, oh, so what we did, I'm just gonna say what we did at the county uh, was we, we gave people one year to file for a permit or to show progress towards rebuilding. So if you cleaned your property or our planning department said that's progress. I just think four years for non-conforming is a long time. It's a long time to have my neighbor who, uh, or my case, if my place would have burnt down, I had a structure that was over the, the line. It's a long time as other people build and they're conforming and then we have somebody come in later. It's a long time. We said one year at the county. So this is things outside the city limits. If you have a non-conforming structure and you can show progress within one year and then come in and apply for a building permit. McCray, I don't know.
Do you have to, uh, apply for a building permit within one year? Do you know?
I can't remember, I can't remember the details. I've talked to our planning director, but this is a real concern with people waiting really a long time.
Cause I guess I worry with the, um, with what you're sharing that the, the room, um, if they can show evidence of work, you know, if you're doing your cleanup, like that could really punch along to a long period too. Um, I think one year with the fact of where we are, because Marion County's ordinance was already in place, the one year for a fire. Um, I think, I think one year would be short right now, given that we're five months in, but I think two years seems, um, like a reasonable time.
And what the governor's, the governor's ordinance that they just passed, uh, or approved at DEQ, that was, I can't remember how long that is either, but.
Gotta ask a question here.
I think that's two years.
So do you all want to recommend a shorter time or do you want to keep it at four?
So I could ask a question on that.
You bet.
What is, what did Mill City do?
Unfortunately, I don't know what Mill City did for non-conforming structures. Gates has two years. They want to have two years.
Two years would align with our other, um, two-year permitting process. I had it circled up on notes as well because it was four years, which seemed to be just random from anything else we were talking about.
So once you buy, once you get your building permit, um, what does the county allow? How long do they give you to finish it? Before you have to reapply?
You, uh, one year, is it six months or a year?
I know that typically it's a six-month extension period within building codes. That's pretty standard and you can obtain several extensions. As long as you're showing progress, most building departments, um, will allow an extension. It's when you've had no activity that you have to come back in for a potential, um, new permit.
So the language here says restoration or replacement shall commence. And that's where I think our planning department, our building guys said, hey, if you show that you've started to restore your property uh, or replace your property within one year, we're gonna, and you come in and file the permit two years from now, we're gonna say that was progress towards restoration. So that's how Marion County guys are interpreting that. And I think, I think we need to encourage people with non-conforming structures. If they're gonna rebuild, we gotta get them done quickly, uh, and incentivize them. Otherwise we gotta start conforming. I, I just think that.
Yeah.
That might be an issue. So that's, that's how we interpret it or how our planning department, I'm not a legal mind, but I mean, Ross is on. I mean Ross is on, on the line, he can give us his citizen opinion, not his legal opinion.
Ross, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. So my, my citizen opinion, you have to be very careful when you, when you wander into the. Thank you Commissioner Cameron, by the way. When you run, wander into the. Area of non-conforming uses, because non-conforming uses are protected property rights. And the typical, typically what they, what the courts have said is that. And again, this is my personal opinion, not my legal opinion, is that you basically have got to give them at least two years. But we're also talking about extraordinary circumstances here. You know, I, I think you get away with two years. I, I, you know, four years is very generous, it, it's longer than anything that I'm aware of in the state. And I do a lot of, as Commissioner Cameron will tell you, I do a lot of property rights law. So I, I, I think you're okay with, with, with two years. And you know, like I said, four years is very generous, but yet you just have to be careful because it's a protected property right.
Yeah, and that was a citizen opinion.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm clarifying for the record.
And your other opinion?
I can't do that.
Can't do that, no.
Oh, mute, mute, sorry.
Let's go with two years.
Everybody okay with two years?
I think so.
Sounds like it. Two years it is.
I have a question, McCray. You there?
Yep.
So are we talking about? People being able to. Build on their same footprint. Regardless of, say they're only three feet from their property line on the side instead of five?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about, okay, there's a, and, and, and I'm just clarifying this because. Again, I'm getting a, a lot of people that have that issue and especially ones that have 5,000 square foot lots. And you know, maybe they're, they're on the line, and so is this going to be just for primary structures? Or what about a garage or an accessory structure that is, was built on the property line? Are they going to have to, and it got, and it was burnt? Because this, this was actually a question that was brought to me. This garage was on the property line. And so it burnt down, can they rebuild on that property line or do they have to move it?
I think, so what this language is for is any lawful non-conforming building or structure. We're not designating. Living quarters, I do. You know, there's this provision that says this is not relinquish compliance with state and federal codes. And I put that in, like you're still going to have to meet fire life safety, so. And I know that there's things about putting a building wall on a property line. So there might be some requirements from a life, a fire life safety standpoint that they'll have to do. That are different than what it was when it was built. So while we're saying you don't have to come into compliance with development standards per this code. This does not relinquish your requirement to come into compliance with building code, fire code, or you know, for. Other properties, potentially FEMA or water, it doesn't, it wouldn't relinquish floodplain obligations, like this doesn't supersede that.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, yep, yep, perfect, thank you.
And that's why I think we need to really, my opinion. As a commissioner, planning commissioner, is to really narrow the scope where you can come in and do that because. The next door neighbor is going to be required to have a setback. If they, if, and so you're going to have fights if you don't narrow this thing down and get it done quickly. And if somebody's, does, misses the window, then you can say, well, that window is closed.
Yeah.
And you rebuild the town in a more. Well, sustainable way, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, there's reasons why we have these zoning setback standards and development standards in place.
Okay. What else we got, McCray, anything else?
Not in the ordinance.
Did we, did we agree what, we're going to change that to? Two years?
Two years.
Oh, two years, okay, alright.
We've bothered.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, is two years from the date of the event?
Or two years from their building permit?
No, no, date of the event.
Two years.
Date of it.
Well, it reads to, it reads the date this ordinance is impacted, so it would be.
Yeah.
Five, okay.
Do you want it from? Date of adoption?
Well, they can't do anything for the last six months.
No, they can't.
June first.
Well, they're, hopefully they're adopting this next month.
So I think at this point, you all talking about fees and talking about enforcement and compliance. I would share that currently in the code, there's penalties. Section 1.110.401 says, despite any penalty provision of any ordinance enacted prior to this ordinance. All violations of city ordinances shall be considered an infraction punishable by a fine of up to $750. Each day of a violation will constitute a separate offense. So there's that language currently. Currently in the code. So there is, there is, there is enforcement is what I'm trying to share with you all. I think practically talking about, and council probably needs to talk about this too, how, how will that actually happen? You know, you suggested, should someone be doing a weekly just drive-through and check-in? There needs to be some outreach on the front end if the ordinance does get adopted. On just reaching, you know.
So who's, who would be allowed to? Enforce such a thing, for example, people come in and out on weekends, they don't have their permit. City councils, you know, weekend, they might not even be up there. I mean, the, the, in the past, the problem has been that nobody really could write. A ticket, so to speak, or a violation and charge, you know. A fee. And I think that's where something has to be done, not only with this, but I think going further, you know, after five years or four years.
We actually do. We do write citations, actually. What are they called, the people, the enforcers? They have the right to write the citations, they bring it to us and I write a letter, send them the citation or go to municipal court. So, you know, we've had several of those. This last summer.
Kelly, who serves as a code enforcement, is the staff or?
No. So, actually, some of it was council and some of it, it was. Resonance. Yeah, I think six, maybe. It was a, a, a variety. I think we even had city planner, not city planner, but a city commissioner as well.
Kelly, is that done by complaint right now or in the past?
Yeah, most of it is complaint driven, yes.
Okay, so it sounds like to me, we do have code, we have a code enforcement policy, we have. We have fines. It sounds like we have fines, so we really don't need to discuss that in planning, it sounds like they already have that in place. Am I reading this right or hearing this right? So now we just need to go back to the fees and figure out what we're going to do for the fees.
Can I say something real quick on five, the emergency clause? McCray, I think it's just a typo error, it's a city of gates in the middle there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, is this a typo? Bill, doing ordinance is, I'm very sorry that that made it to you, please fix that, my apologies.
That's good.
Mr. Chair, so, so before we go back to the, the fee issue, Todd's comment. So we have people designated that can issue the citations. And I think maybe for a, a future meeting, it'd be good to know. To have a presentation on the process because you can issue citations and people don't pay them and they don't move their RVs. So you know, what, what does the city do, you know, to totally enforce? Obviously liens on properties, etc., so I think that might be another discussion further down, or Kelly, go ahead.
I was just going to say, basically it's citations. If they don't pay it, you know, they can go to municipal court, if they still don't pay it, then they get a lien on their property. And that's about as far as it goes, you know, we just don't have the people. To do that, and now, I don't know, you know, the, the enforcers that we, that we did have. I don't think that they're up there right now, some of them aren't, and so I know Counselor Page had said something about.
We lost you, we, we lost you on Counselor Page.
Counselor Page had said, had mentioned that we definitely need people up there. To, and to do some enforcement, I just don't have the answer on how to do that.
So, so the, the city ordinance says the city recorder. Or other officials designated by the city council shall have the power and duty to enforce provisions of this code.
Right. But getting out there and, and finding, you know. Like, and most of it was complaint driven, just like Gina said. They, someone would call with a complaint or come in with a complaint and then we investigate it and then we would, you know, go from there, but. And I've got, you know, some people. As well, but you know, we just don't have somebody out there all the time looking. I don't, I don't know what the answer is, really.
You're going to also have to give people time to comply, that a lot of people aren't going to know about the hundred dollar fee. And the four years or the two years, so going to have to make it, give them 30 to 60 days before you start enforcing fines anyway. I would, I would think. After they read the language.
I think 30 days is sufficient.
As long as they're aware that they're in violation.
I think as they come in to start their water bill back up, that, get a copy of the, this ordinance. So there's no excuses as to saying I didn't see it.
What if the water don't start back up for a couple of months, then do they start their violation?
Can drop them off at their campers.
Yeah. I'm sure, a lot of people won't mind paying the fee, but they don't even know about it. They don't have no reason to contact the city. Several people just moved on to their property, then they don't even contact the city because they're not using any city resources.
And the city's not there.
And the city's not there.
The only thing we can do is, is send. Letters out to each. Homeowner, and we've done that in the past. We do have all addresses for all people that have the water meters, but.
Maybe it would, maybe what we could talk about doing is an update on the water. You know, a letter to all property owners on an update on the water and this ordinance. You know, there, and, and just try to hit it in lots of different ways, we send a mailer, I don't know where that money comes from, well, we can answer that question, but like, we send a mailer to everybody. We get to different, all the different Facebook pages that there are for Detroit, there's several different community groups and that we just really, we do our best to. We being myself, supporting Kelly and Michelle in just finding a good way to blast out. Information and we, and we just have a little grace of time that we work to get people informed. Because like you say, Kevin, no one's out to necessarily. They wouldn't mind paying the fee if they, if they knew about it.
Yes. Everybody's been hit hard up there, but they understand that there has to be something.
Yeah.
But they don't know.
Yeah, yep, so does that seem like a good strategy to you all or are there other ideas?
I think that's a great strategy.
Okay.
I, I think we should give them 30 days or something after they know, so they can get prepared to pay the fee. So maybe the first of April. Or something like that, first of March, by the first of March, a hundred dollar fee will be paid, one-time fee, that'll be good for four years. And I think everybody will be okay with that, but they just need to know that they're in violation. Time to react.
And I would volunteer to drop off a permit, an empty one at their camper.
Yeah. Well, those of you who know and are up there, that sort of, I don't want any of you in a position of enforcement necessarily, you know, but I, it, just the.
By the commission.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I agree.
We have something.
Yeah, you totally do, if you all are comfortable helping with that outreach, it's a, I think it's helpful, it is helpful.
Got it.
Yeah.
Alright, what's next? The fees?
Yep.
So we've discussed a hundred dollar fee for the two-year, we didn't really talk about the renewal fee. I would think a hundred dollar fee for the initial and then maybe a fifty dollar renewal, that's what I'm thinking.
I agree, I think a hundred dollars for two years and then after that, if they even need it. Fifty dollars a year after that.
And it's back to the fifty dollars like a camping fee, yeah, now, for two. Which everybody can be able to afford that.
Think so. They have to realize the city has to function and without some sort of income, there is no city. I think most people agree.
And we have to have some structure, we have to know who's where, yeah, now. Who's up there? Now, and I, I will say, I have a logger on my back lot. And he's not a resident and he will be moving plants. But it was kind of a security thing because nobody's around. But he doesn't fall into any of these categories. So he's got to go.
McCray, those fees sound good.
Up there and if we get water, I'm opening those rooms up and I'm going to run them out to the logging community.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, yeah, you all have had a great discussion tonight and actually helped clarify, I think, some really important points for us to be able to. You know, there's creating language, but then there's the actual implementation and you all talked through some things that are critical. So I, I, I feel set and I feel like you've answered. The questions I needed in the feedback.
Okay. Any more discussions on this? Do we need to make another thing?
Davis? I got one thing to bring up, we've discussed everything pertaining to residential property and nothing about commercial property. We had one commercial property that was lost with apartments above it. You want to, do they fall into the same classification or you're going to have a separate classification?
I read somewhere where I thought I saw something to do with multifamily residential, commercial, general and public zones. Was that in the very beginning?
Yes.
Yeah, section one there, Dean, it, the second A. Brings up single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, general and public zones. So those would all apply.
Okay.
And then I think, you know, we have our employees working at the store, you're allowed to have another camper there. If I have an employee working at the hotel, allowed to put that camper out back, I think that's all the same. But to have another. Coffee shop was, is a great idea.
So here's the, here's my thought. Employees are going to be. employees are gonna be, so that's gonna be a huge problem up there this year. Cause we don't have any housing for them. Um, we're gonna have to make, I don't wanna call it concessions, but some allowances maybe for, in those cases, I mean, I don't, uh,
Maybe they'll let us put two campers on the lots.
Well, at the coffee shop, for example, um, I don't think that lot's big enough to allow a camper on there and still build the structure. Maybe.
So, I'm sorry, my internet went crazy and I was off for a while. Are we still on the, uh?
Talking about commercial buildings now, the coffee shop that Paul lost.
You're the chairman now. He just voted you chair.
Well, we still got a little meat in the game.
Hey, no public comment, please.
We're on to discussing, um, this summer, you know, for like, uh, workers up there. Where, what are we gonna do for them? Are we gonna discuss that and make some concessions for them? Cause like Dean was talking about, um, he brought up the commercial properties, which it is in here.
Well, I think the, I mean, if you, right, you could have one RV on your property if there were, if there is a loss use. And if it's permitted.
Correct, okay.
But Dean, the RV could be five stories high.
Yeah.
Ten slides.
I think, are we talking about, I, I don't know, um, the detail very well that y'all are referencing. Are you talking about employees who, they're only there temporarily? They're only there during the summer and how are they living there before? Like what, what's the applicability of what we're talking about?
So here, here's Here's the issue, you've got, um, marinas.
Yeah.
Two arenas, you've got the grocery store, uh, that will be operational this summer. There's not much other business, um, that will be operational. And those people employ probably, you know, 20 people, maybe 25 people who was that had housing, um, someplace. And now that housing's gone, they obviously weren't homeowners in most cases. So trying to find additional housing space for them. And I'll give you a prime example of the existing code. Um, and, and I can say this today because I sold it, I don't own it again today. But I had, um, 10,000 feet, two 5,000 square foot lots, but only one water meter. And the city came after me because I couldn't have two RVs on those two lots unless I had, it, it, long story short. So there are places in town where we could, we could allow people to have more RVs because they have the space. They have the utilities, et cetera, for temporary seasonal help. And I think that's what Dean's saying is, what are we gonna do for the seasonal help this summer? Because we are, the two are, the two marina owners that, that we're gonna be going up and operating. And you got a grocery store that's gonna operate this summer. Uh, and maybe we just rent Elaine's four rooms from her motel that are left.
Five now, we got an apartment open. Yeah, it's gonna be tough.
I think as, um, as, I think it's great that y'all are thinking about it in January for, you know, stuff in June. It gives us time, uh, not a lot of time. Uh, but it, it also would be helpful if we can come up with like site specific locations. Then we can look at how either the RV tent permit provision, we could read that or a particular zone, um, could allow what you're talking about. It's kinda hard to build a code around.
Maybe we could look at the commercial zone for temporary housing in the commercial zone because until they start to rebuild, like, you know, Dean was describing, uh, one property that, uh, burned down that had an apartment above. And a commercial property below, maybe you can put two or three, uh, motor, um, RVs on that property for the summer.
So McRae, if you look into this, you might wanna look, sorry Gina, you might wanna look at what the state and the county, I don't know about the county, but we can, what an RV park is and Kelly probably on that, and I think it's three or more.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have provisions in the code to allow for an RV park, um, and the zoning. Uh, Kelly, were you gonna share anything?
No.
Okay. You don't need to, I always, you don't need to. Uh, I just
I thought the park was two or more, but I'd have to, I'd have, I'd have to check.
We could table this until the need arises.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, and we can, um, myself, I can get a little bit of information. I mean, I will say one thing that the council did talk about and why I had to go back in December to clarify is they said they wanna tackle the RV tent, um, uh, portion of the zone. And I know y'all went through this a year and a half ago with some code updates. I, I know it's complicated and there's a lot of, um, a lot of different perspectives. So I think where you all are coming from on how do we provide some temporary housing for employees this summer during the time, during the time when there isn't an available housing stock is important. So we can come up with some ideas.
Well, I suggest we table this and maybe we can get the RV tent provision sent to all of us to review and look at it for maybe next meeting. And maybe get some input from some of the local businesses, like, uh, talk to Scott Lunskey, see what he's got going on. Maybe, maybe he has some suggestions as well as far as what he's, has planned. Um, and maybe bring it back and we'll discuss it next meeting.
I agree.
Um, you guys, do all you have, uh, the development code? Um, you can find it on the webs, webs, our website, or I have actual, um, paper copies here. Um, I didn't know if, uh, you know, something you guys can refer to.
Ryan Burke.
You just parked, yeah. Yes, it ours.
I'll, yeah, Kelly.
So anyway, you can, you can look on the web, on the, the, the website, um, uh, if you need to. Or I can get you a paper copy.
That'd be great. Um, that's on, that's on the website, everyone can print that from there.
Yeah, you go to documents and then go, and then go to the bottom, towards the bottom of the page and it says development code.
Can you send us a link?
To the website?
To wherever you're referring.
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Alright, anything else?
Oh.
You have a motion to adjourn?
I'm in.
Motion.
Thank you, everyone.
Second? Alright.
Second it.
Alright.
Thanks, everybody.
Adjourn.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, bye bye.
Bye guys.